Okay. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools. On behalf of all residents, we are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to the public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046, ad sequitur, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packin in the Times on January 6, 2022, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Court Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, specifically designated in NJSA 18838.1. In the event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this by law. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you call the roll?
Yes. Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Present.
Betsy Bagwell? Beth Baron?
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Jean Durbin?
Present.
Mara Franceschi?
Here.
Arnold Donald?
Present.
Susan Cantor?
Yeah.
Rob Christopher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. I'm moving to item D1, Adoption of the Minutes. Adoption of the Minutes for January 18th, 2022. Can I have a motion? Jean, second. Debbie? Mr. Bolden?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
So, Betsy Bagwell has joined the meeting. We are voting on the January 18th minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes.
Okay, item D2, Adoption of the Minutes for February 8th, 2022. Can I have a motion, please? Beth, second. Rob?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to item E1, the Student Board Members Report. Nice to see you, Chris and Ned. I hope you're enjoying February of your senior years. And please let us know what's going on.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We hope you're all doing well. Ned and I definitely are. As an update on things at Princeton High School, this Friday, we'll be transitioning away from our current modified block schedule and back to our normal six-day A through F rotating schedule. So we're interested to see how the student body reacts to this change, and we will also keep you posted on how this works out. In addition, over the past few weeks, we have gotten numerous requests from both students and teachers alike to bring up the Wi-Fi at PHS. This whole year, the Wi-Fi in the school has been shoddy at best, and in the past few months, it seems like it has only become even worse. Nowadays, a majority of classwork as well as homework is completed on computers, and the Wi-Fi system in PHS was simply not made for such a large load.
It's not uncommon for the internet not to work altogether, and when it does, students often end up waiting minutes, sometimes upward of like five minutes for web pages to load. And when needing to go to three or four separate pages to navigate to an online textbook or shared Google document or whatnot, this wasted time does really add up. And of course, this is assuming the internet is even working that day. I've had many classes where we're just simply unable to do our planned activities because the Wi-Fi is cooperating, and it's become a very massive disruption in the schools. So we wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I saw that Dr. Foster, our interim assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, was taking copious notes, and we will definitely be looking into that. So thank you. I don't know if any other board members had any questions?
No question. I want to thank you both because I'm getting the same report from my son, who can't even get his check-in in the morning if he doesn't do it at home. If he's too close to the building, it doesn't work. So thanks for bringing that up.
Brian?
Yeah, I would just note that this is distressing news because two years ago, you know, the district made a number of investments at the recommendation of the administration to dramatically upgrade the Wi-Fi. So I think that if Dr. Foster could look into it, and if the Operations Committee might also have this as a topic of follow-up, that would be great.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Ned and Chris, and I hope you enjoy your month, and you're going to classes, and senioritis hasn't started yet, even though it is spring outside. There's still a lot more school, so we look forward to seeing you in March. Thank you. So tonight, thank you, everyone, for joining our meeting. I just wanted to first thank everyone who voted for the referendum. I think this is the first meeting where it's been official that we've had our monthly board meeting, and so I just wanted to thank everyone who took the time to become informed and went out and voted or mailed in their vote. So thank you. And I'm going to turn it over now to a presentation by some community members and students from Princeton High School to talk about the AAPI curriculum, and we're going to start with Ying Lu first. Please take it away, Ying.
All right. Thank you, Daphna, and thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of Board of Education. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. My name is Ying Lu, and I'm a parent of a middle school student, and I'm also a board member of Make Us Visible New Jersey, which is a grassroots organization. We have been doing a lot of legislative advocacy work to making the AAPI curriculum bill possible. So I'm just gonna do, thank you very much for hosting us to do this presentation. We're also gonna have some community members, high school students and parents, to speak and share their experiences and their thoughts on this bill. So I'm just gonna do a very short presentation. Also, my co-board member Nancy Lee is also here, so we're gonna do a short presentation about a bill and about Make Us Visible New Jersey and the curriculum resources we have. So let me see if I can get the presentation going.
Matt, can Ying share her screen?
Yes. Yep. You can see this, right?
Okay.
Yes.
So, yeah. So we had a very exciting news on January 18th, that Governor Murphy signed in legislations ensuring API inclusive curriculum. So this bill package actually includes two bills. One is about ensuring, including the Asian-American Pacific Islanders' history and the contribution into public school K-12 curriculum, specifically included in the social studies standard. And the second piece of this legislative, it's about establishing an Asian-American Commission at the New Jersey DOE. Currently, there are actually quite, there are several curriculum inclusion laws and commissions at the DOE, such as the Amstat Commission and the Amstat Law and LGBTQ laws, and also Holocaust and Holocaust Commission. So we're very excited that the API history is finally being brought into this, into the New Jersey DOE as of Monday, given that the fast rising of Asian-American student population in New Jersey. So here, just, I'm just gonna quickly go through what the API curriculum bill is about. So the API curriculum bill basically asks for the School Board of Education to include instruction on the history and contributions of Asian-American and the Pacific Islanders in the appropriate place in the curriculum as a part of school districts' implementation of New Jersey student learning standards in social studies. And the Board of Education shall have policies and procedures in place pertaining to the selection of instructional materials to implement the requirement of the, of the, per the social studies standard. And also, the Board of Education should seek the assistance or advice of the Commission, Asian American Heritage Commission at the DOE. So this Heritage, Asian American Heritage Commission is to be established, and they will include 21 members, and all of them are required to have expertise in Asian, Asian-American studies. And also, the API instructional materials should be inclusive instructional materials and portray the culture and economic diversity of Asian-American and Pacific Islanders. Also, the mandate requires this act to take effect, take effect immediately in the school year 2022 and 23. And we have been in contact with members of the DOE and our superintendent and assistant superintendent. So we're very grateful for your support. Thank you very much. Also, I want to say a thing about, or two about Make Us Visible New Jersey. As you know, that we've done a lot of legislative advocacy, but we are also an organization that we do a lot of work supporting API curriculum development. And in particular, we, we are connected, well-connected to a lot of open source resources for educators who need help to implement the API curriculum within their classrooms. And here, I also want to just do a shout-out about our legislative advocacy. So this is really, at this point, it's a statewide movement, and we have gathered so much support from, we had 40, over 40 legislators. So those are the legislators who supported this bill, our primary sponsors of the bill, and we have also 40, 44 co-sponsors of this bill from the NJ Legislature. And also, many educators, I'm just gonna show you, highlight some pictures, and those are our students, high school students and also middle school students who participate in the student leaders, and some of them are actually from Princeton High School. And, you know, this, you can go ahead and check out this list, and you see, we have so many people participated, and it's really quite amazing and quite remarkable as the, as the need, as the, you know, from the community. People were really, the Asian-American population is asking for this bill to happen and for the curriculum to be more inclusive. And also, if you want to follow our work, and here's our website, and also you can find us on Facebook at Make Us Visible New Jersey. So I'm gonna just stop here, and I'll have Nancy, Nancy Lee, who's my co-board member, to speak on our, the curriculum resources that we have.
Thank you, Ying. So I'll just start out wishing everyone a healthy and happy Lunar New Year. This is the year of the tiger. Go Tigers! So I've lived in the Princeton area on and off for nearly 30 years, including in the last decade, when my husband and I decided to retire to Princeton. We absolutely love living here. No regrets whatsoever. We love the diversity and the sense of community of Princeton. And it was in retirement that I started to learn about Asian-American studies and Asian-American history, and I believe it is foundational knowledge for all students, not only for students with Asian origins. There were no courses in K through 12 or university when I went to school, and that's why I became involved with Make Us Visible New Jersey and also with supporting Asian-American Studies at Princeton University. This sheet lists, the slide that you're looking at, lists some of the API curriculum resources and professional development opportunities that are offered by the partnering organizations of Make Us Visible New Jersey. These resources are mostly free or will be made free and ready to be adopted by the school districts. We are committed to public-private partnerships and working with philanthropic institutions so that we have a successful, barrier-free, long-term implementation. The first one, the Asian-American Education Project, features a comprehensive set of free K through 12 curriculum lessons, lesson plans covering 1850 to 2019 thematic topics such as civil rights, education, gender equality, immigration, and more. The lesson plans were developed for social studies, US history, world history, English, and sometimes mathematics. All the lesson plans are free and free development, professional development workshops are available, which can lead to one-hour credit for PD/salary advancement. PBS has also developed multimedia materials. There were 37 videos in one media gallery on Asian-American histories for grades three, sorry, grades three through 12. And the South Asian Americans Digital Archive has recently published Our Stories book on South Asian American stories with a companion curriculum guide to help teachers use the stories in their classrooms. The Immigrant History Initiative and Yuri Education Project are two nonprofit organizations that offer free lesson plans and curriculum package consultations. And on March 11th at 7:00, Make Us Visible New Jersey is sponsoring a free webinar called Adding API Curriculum to Your School from Law to the Classroom, and we can send the digital flyer with the URL registration information for anyone who's interested. That's all I really wanted to make the point of. Apart from that, all of this is on the Make Us Visible New Jersey website, and we continue to add, I mean, there's much more material than this, but these were some of the highlights we wanted to bring. And that's all I have. And with that, we'll pass it on to the next speaker. Ying?
So, yeah, then we have three members from the community, two high school students, Han Li and Nan La and Jackie Chant. So Han is gonna talk about his experiences first, and so Han, it's your turn.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lu. Hi, everyone. I'm Han. I'm a junior at Princeton High School. And I just wanted to preface this by saying that I'm super excited, super excited for this bill, and I know that PHS and the Princeton Public Schools as a whole have some very, very good teachers. And even before the bill, I know that they've been working to bring progress in this area, and I could see it in my own education in a lot of different ways, and I'm super excited to see what we can all do after the bill with the support of legislative backing. Now, what I wanted to really talk about was just representation as an Asian-American student, and not just in history and in history classes, but really throughout the entire curriculum. Oftentimes, I felt that growing up, it was difficult to find, you know, this sounds cliche, and I know we've all heard it, but like, people who quote-unquote "look like me", but like, not really look like me, but like, you know, people who sounded like me, who had names that aren't, you know, common American names, people who, you know, whose experiences were ones that I could relate to, to some degree, beyond the ones that, you know, my other classmates and peers would have. And as a child in elementary and middle school, I felt that a lot of the things that we read, especially in classes like English or history, were primarily accounts that have been taught over and over again of almost mainstream media. And I felt overwhelmingly that a lot of it was a Eurocentric view, and it didn't really include representation that felt, that made me feel included in what I was learning. And I recognize that this bill is going to change that dramatically because of education and history. But I just wanted to say that, you know, working to bring representation and progress is more than just learning about the past. You know, history is super important, and I know that here at PHS, we, it's taken very seriously and that we learn a lot about history, and I am very grateful for that. But I think true progress and real representation has to come, not just in the history classrooms, but really everywhere. And I feel that, especially in literature, in art, and things like, that aren't just your standard learn-a-fact classes. I feel having representation of, not just, well, obviously, the topic at hand is Asian-Americans, but for all people would be very helpful, just because it opens up perspectives and creative thinking, perspective and real-life scenarios that, you know, you don't always get in history lessons. And I feel that going forwards, I would love to see changes made to the curriculum, not just for learning history, learning Asian-American history, but reading books written by Asian-American authors in art history classes, art classes, seeing, you know, seeing works made by people of color, API artists. Things like that would be monumental, I feel, to students, not just our, like, high school students of our age, but, you know, younger students growing up, what they see, what they feel, how they take these things from their environment. Because school is very important to a lot of people in the community, and a lot of our students, younger students, whether they want to admit it or not, really do take things away from school. And I feel like having all of those resources available to them, not just in the history lessons, not just in, this is what people like you did in the past, this is what people like you experienced in America, but, you know, this is what people like you are doing right now in this nation that pertains to all sorts of fields, all sorts of opportunities, et cetera, would be really, really helpful for our development, for our learning, and I think it'd really help paint a better picture of America and the world as it is right now. And isn't that the goal? Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Jackie next?
I think Nan is, you're next. We're gonna have the two students speak first. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is Nan La. I am a Vietnamese-American junior attending Princeton High School. So aside from being a full-time student, I've participated in several Asian advocacy efforts as the executive director of a youth Asian advocacy group, Asian Youth Act, and I have supported Make Us Visible in passing the educational bill and more. While I see many of my peers similar to myself in my classrooms, that is typically not what's reflected in the textbooks that we carry, in the history classes that we learn from. And while many of those history classes are incredibly engaging, it's a place where I don't necessarily see myself. And for many of the events that we do learn, where they do represent or have some Asian representation in them, much of it is negative, with little to no mention of Asian-American achievement or accomplishments. Aside from that, though, much of what I have personally learned was from outside of the classroom, but it's essential to see myself in that mosaic. Where do I fit in society? Where is my past from as an Asian-American? Because Asian-Americans are not new to the US. We have a long history here. It's just not talked about. So some of these conversations that I've had with some of my non-Asian peers about these history events and influential figures like Larry Itzlong, Gracely Boggs, Yuri Kouchiyama, why don't we hear those names in our textbooks when they've done monumental things? So by having those conversations and introducing them into class, why do we emphasize representation? We emphasize it because it's a place and a ground for empathy. By having these conversations, people have more to work on for that multifaceted background and better understanding. History must be approached with nuance, both good and bad, so that we can actually see the full idea. Especially as a Southeast Asian student, there is almost no mention at all of us in our textbooks other than maybe the few opportunities that have been glossed over where Southeast Asia was mentioned, either for the purpose of American colonization or Western colonization or war. So from Princeton Public Schools, I hope to see more breadth, but also depth. And we must ensure that the implementation is taken with care. I look forward to seeing us further enrich our students with Asian-American history and commit to inclusivity. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so thanks so much, Nan. That's really moving. Jackie?
Okay. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak about my experiences and the importance of the AAPI curriculum bill for the K to 12 curriculum in New Jersey. My name's Jackie Singh, and my husband Frank and I have two daughters, one at Littlebrook Elementary School and another at Princeton Charter School. We both are Chinese-American, who were born and raised in the United States. I grew up in West Hartford, Connecticut, my entire life, and my husband grew up in New York City. My mother is also Chinese-American, who was born in Washington DC and raised in New York City. My grandfather immigrated from China and served in the US Army during World War II. Growing up in Connecticut as one of the few Asian kids in town was, was not easy. Although as a kid, I didn't know any differently. I thought that acts of racism and prejudice were normal as a first or third grader. I remember regularly hearing derogatory chants about Chinese and Japanese people while kids slanted their eyes in different directions. These songs were just like another playground song kids would sing. When a new exchange student arrived in class one day in fourth grade, I remember one boy telling me that I should marry the exchange student because we were both foreigners. As a quiet fourth grader, I just internalized all these events, and even my mom was not aware of these things until the past couple of years, when I have been able to process my experiences as an adult. After having kids, I was determined to raise them in an environment that was more diverse so that they would not have to experience the same struggles I had growing up. We specifically chose Princeton, New Jersey because it has a reputation of diversity and inclusiveness, which is further reflected by Governor Murphy's signing of the AAPI bill. The introduction of the AAPI bill will allow students to learn about the history of Asians in America and the many accomplishments they have made, which benefit the daily lives of all Americans. By educating students, perhaps they will not see Asian-Americans as foreigners, but an integral part of the colorful fabric of America. Even though I have black hair and brown eyes and look Chinese, does not make me any less American than an American of a different descent. The students in the Princeton Public School District are truly privileged with an upbringing surrounded with diversity and differences, and to be living in a state that sees the importance of education. It is only when we start teaching our kids to embrace and appreciate the differences in others as a strength and not a weakness, that we will be training the future leaders we desperately need. Thank you for your time and commitment to educating the community about the history and achievements of the AAPI community. Thanks so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jackie. And I just also want to conclude our presentation. As educator Emily Stiles said, curriculums are like windows and mirrors. So for, why do we, why we're here asking for more inclusive curriculum? And in particular, this evening, Asian-American Pacific Islanders. We feel like as a group, our student, although the percentage of Asian-American students has been on the rise in Princeton Public School, we now have over 20% of students are Asian-American Pacific Islanders. And also, we have surprisingly 8% of mixed-race students, and many of them, including my own children, are mixed-race. And however, we don't
And however, we don't see enough representation, as a lot of students and parents mentioned. Right? And I think it's really important for our kids to feel being included in school and in the classrooms as they can see themselves in the curriculum. Also, as Nan and Han also both mentioned, they want to see breadth and depth. It's not just dropping a few topics in the history, in social study lessons, but rather a meaningful inclusion, an infusion of AAPI curriculum content. And also as a window, right? So that the other student can therefore better understand who Asian Americans are and understand their peers better. And on that note, I would also extend our plea, our what we're doing here, we like to also see all curriculum, diverse curriculum being included. The Black History Curriculum, LGBTQ Curriculum, and also Latin American and many other in Holocaust, right? Because all our students, Princeton has a very diverse student body. All students deserve to see themselves as a mirror in the curriculum. And all students also deserve to understand each other through curriculum as a window open to a broad world. Thank you very much, and you know, we welcome any questions and any feedback. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ying, for for this presentation, and we also want to thank Nan, Han, Jackie, and Nancy. Thank you so much for your efforts. I think as Nan said, you know, we are all better if we understand other people, and it helps increase empathy, and I think if the current events show, we all need to understand each other better. I see some questions from the board. Michelle?
Actually, I have two comments. First of all, congratulations on the passage of the legislation. I think it's amazing and wonderful. But as a former member of the Amistad Commission, I will say to you, your work has just begun. America loves the binary. We won't, we only want to see black and white, and anything else seems to tax us, you know, incredibly. And so my kids, one of my children has gone through Princeton Public Schools and learned nothing about the contributions of AAPI folks. She's learned more by going to China and visiting and being curious about that. I don't want my son to have the same experience, so I'm going to put it on you to hold our feet to the fire and become and be constantly vigilant in monitoring what we do in the classroom and ensuring that the perspective of AAPI people is not only represented, not only the suffering and the challenges and the hard times, but also the gifts and the contributions and the art and the beauty and the music and that have made America the kind of place that it is with all this wonderful diversity. So thank you for your work. Don't let up. And I'm looking forward to to learning some things myself.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Yeah, we will keep the work going. And without a student support and parent support and the BoE support, right, we have a great school district here. Together, we can do a lot more.
Debbie?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for a great presentation, and of course, to thank the students for for sharing, because it's hard to come here and say a lot of this, and it really, it really helps us. I'm on Equity and SAC, and this is the work that we are really excited to be part of and to support. And just want you to know that we are here for that, and obviously, a lot more falls on curriculum and instruction. But as a board, you know, I'm looking forward to us moving forward and making, you know, having this there for all the students. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you again, Ying, and just a reminder, we have this space every month to hear from members of our community and students about things that they're either working on or that are important to them, so please reach out if you would like to present or speak with the board. And before I move on to the superintendent comments, I just wanted to congratulate Maridela Bajah, who is the Supervisor of Professional Development, Testing and Assessment and Supervisor of Science for PPS. Ms. Bajah was selected to participate in the Fulbright Specialist Program. The Fulbright Specialist Program pairs highly qualified US academics with host institutions abroad to share their expertise, expertise, strength, institutional linkages, gain international experience, and learn about other cultures while building capacity at their overseas host institutions. And so on behalf of the board, Maridela, congratulations and well deserved. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kelly and the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? On tonight's agenda, I just want to let the community know, under governance, we have shared with the board a summary of our student safety incidents from September 1 through December of 2021. And also, I know that many of you are probably eagerly awaiting what Dr. Kelly is going to share regarding what's happening in the district on March 8 and mask. So what I will say is please tune in at the beginning of next week, and let me tell you why. We have been working really side by side with Jeff Grocer and the Public Health Department, as well as Dr. Helmrich, Mickey Christofili, and our principals and nurses. We meet on a weekly basis. We have been looking at our COVID transmission numbers. We've been looking at, and thank you, community, for coming out to our clinics and either receiving your booster shots. And many of you have been even receiving for the first time your vaccinations. So we're looking at our vaccination rates, and the trends are going in the right direction. But we want to partner with our health department, and in partnering with the health department, we're going to be looking at our numbers. We do have a chart that we will use. However, we also want to wait until we hear from the Department of Health and the Department of Education, because they are going to be releasing, we're hearing this this week, updated guidance for K-12. So I actually just literally late this afternoon registered for a meeting that's taking place first thing Friday morning. As soon as we attend that meeting, we're going to go back to our chart. So my prediction is that we should be able to share with the community what our plans are after March 8 at the beginning of next week. So please stay tuned. I apologize that I'm unable to share anything with you this evening, but we want to be great partners with our Department of Health. So any questions from the board before I move on? All right. The other thing that I provided to the board, everyone, is, and I can show this to you, but I'm going to try to do a more visual, engaging presentation to the community. But for full disclosure, the Board of Ed did see in their executive content the superintendent's mid-year update. If you recall, at the beginning of the school year, I outlined our commitments, our district goals, along with the measurable outcomes. So what I've provided to the board is our progress year-to-date, some of the obstacles or risks that are aligned with our progress, as well as what the plan is moving forward. So for each of these commitments, we have that update that has been provided to the board. I'm not going to bore the community, as well as the board, with reading all of this to you. However, I'm going to be working with Elizabeth Collier, who is our Public Information Officer, on Friday. She knows how much Dr. Kelly loves being in front of the video. I'm being very sarcastic. I do not like it at all. And we're going to try to create something that's a little bit more engaging so that it could be shared with the full community to let you know the really great things that are happening across our school as it is aligned with our four commitment areas for this school year. And then finally, I want to thank in advance the board's support, because also on this evening's agenda is a very important vote, and that is a vote that will allow our community to engage in a strategic planning process so that we can continue the great work and continue to build on the best of Princeton that has taken place for decades upon decades with a keen eye for both inclusion and equity. So I'm really excited about that process. I'm really excited about engaging with the board and the stakeholders in our community as we set the course forward for our next three to five years. So that concludes my report for this evening, and again, please watch out for us for a special announcement next week. But if we can continue to follow the numbers and continue to follow the guidance and partner with our Department of Health, I know that our staff would greatly appreciate it. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Appreciate it. And I had to think about March 8, but now I know. So thank you for that. So now we're going to move on to item I, public forum. If there's any public comment on agenda items, and I know there is a young lady who needs to be going to bed soon, so Mr. Bolden, if we could, I don't know if she's still here. Is she still here? And her, she's, her last name is Figueroa. If we could please call on her. Thank you.
Let's go ahead, Ms. Figueroa.
Good evening, everyone. This is Victoria Figueroa. I'm an eighth grader at Princeton Middle School. I would kindly like to ask the board to consider more eighth-grade privileges and celebrations. My class and I have experienced three very different years at the middle school, including some name changes. Throughout our middle school's history, the eighth graders have been given chances to celebrate and bond as a class. I understand activities like the DC trip are out of the picture this year due to the current state of the pandemic. However, I would like the board to consider supporting an eighth-grade class trip. This could be a local or day trip for I, for one, know my peers and I have many ideas we would be happy to share with you guys. I would also like to propose an eighth-grade semi-formal in addition to the sunset afternoon and a proper moving on ceremony. I believe that all of this would help promote school spirit, class bonding, and the general well-being of the class of 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think it's Isabella, is that right? Even, no, it's Victoria. It is Victoria. Well, thank you, Victoria. We appreciate your, you know, coming and speaking with us, and we'd encourage you, you know, to speak with the principal, and thank you.
Thank you.
Renee Obragon?
Hi, yes, my name is Renee Obragon, and I have a student in high school and in the middle school. I just wanted to thank the board for their efforts in getting our schools closer to normal. I'm also very encouraged by what, or at least Dr. Kelly's tone on what's coming March 8. But I just want to be clear, I think the next step has to be for PPS to make masks optional. I just want to quote a couple of stats that I think are relevant. These are from New Jersey State and Princeton government website. But Princeton is eighty-nine percent vaccinated for above twelve-year-olds, and for sixty-five above, it's ninety-nine percent. And for Mercer County, it's sixty-nine and eighty-two percent respectively, so we're very, very well protected. Case rates, hospitalization rates have collapsed in Princeton, New Jersey, and broadly across the US. For those who remain cautious or for whatever reason want to wear a mask still, hundred percent support their right to wear one. It should not come at the expense of the overwhelming majority of students and faculty who are constrained by the masks. It's time for our children to be allowed to practice sports, play instruments, have debate club, socialize as normal kids without masks. A very small illustration, but my son, who's in high school, is required to wear a mask during track practice and a mask with a slit during band practice. The first is unhealthy, and the latter one I can only describe as purely for show, because there's no medical benefit to that. Our policy at the town and school level are in direct conflict. On January 13, the Princeton Health Department reinstated the mask mandate in all public indoor locations and then let it expire on January 31. That was great news. That was a tacit admission that infection rates and hospitalization rates were manageable in the town. More importantly, it showed that we can make quick decisions at the town level. My question is, what difference is there between a crowded McCaffrey's or any of our restaurants in town and our schools with regards to group settings? The answer is none. So why are we still restricting our kids and hard-working staff? We've asked our kids, parents, teachers to mask, get vaccinated, get boosted with the carrot that there is light at the end of the tunnel. So with Governor Murphy's mask mandate being lifted on March 7, if the Princeton Health Department and Board of Ed are guided by the science, then they will also follow, hopefully, Governor Murphy's lead and then the mask mandate in Princeton High School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Obragon. I think next is Ms. Rose.
Dr. Rose?
Hi, this is, this is actually a quick question that if you can't answer, maybe you can, I don't know, send out an email. I did try to put in my children's booster vaccines into the computer, into Power School. I was not able to add the boosters, and that might be relevant. And I agree with Renee. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Rose. We'll have someone reach out to you about that.
Great.
Okay.
Nicholas Maya?
All right, good evening, everyone. My name's Nico Maya. I'm a 10th grader here in PHS, and I've lived ten years in South America. I wanted to bring up a pretty, pretty large topic that is becoming quite a big issue in the Princeton District in general, or Princeton High School to focus on. It is the use of vaping and other drugs and et cetera. And I wanted to bring up an idea for an assembly that it is pretty good. It is called Steered Straight. It is a nonprofit that fights vaping, addiction, suicide, bullying every single day. Their most popular, you know, speaker is, it's the person who will come. And his name is Michael DeLeon. He's the founder and CEO of Steered Straight. He has, he has shared his preteen experiences involving nicotine, alcohol, and weed with over 12 million people. I'm very passionate about helping my peers, and I know in my heart that Mr. DeLeon indeed is also passionate about his mission to change and save lives. The purpose of Steered Straight is to impart youth with the right information to make educated choices about the effects of vaping, drugs, and alcohol in their brain and their body. They help teens and young adults navigate the difficulties that our ever-changing and challenging world throws at us. Mr. DeLeon will visit the district for an entire day, lecturing groups according to their age, while also educating parents and staff. And the number of students at Princeton is 3,500, and every single one of them could learn from Mr. DeLeon. And I was wondering if it would be appropriate to bring him in now. Thanks, by the way.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Maya. I would encourage you to speak with the Director of Guidance at the high school, Ms. Karis. Is Mr. Maya off now?
Yeah, there are no other.
Perhaps Ms. Karis could reach out to Mr. Maya? Okay, and is that?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're moving on. The harassment, intimidate, intimidation and bullying report, that's just a consent item. Is that great, Mr. Bolden?
Correct.
Okay, and so next we go to the Board Committee highlights, and the first up. I'm sorry, who's it? I'm sorry, Equity Committee with Betsy Baglio and Debbie Bronfeld chairs.
I'm gonna read it. Thank you. The Equity Committee met on Tuesday, February 15. The focus for the committee was to start discussing sample equity policies of other districts in the US. As the board focuses on creating an equity policy for PPS, we discussed working on a policy to help shift the culture of PPS, which may include part policy, part administration goals and strategies, be sustainable when people leave the district, and show district work that is being done. Foundation of the board's work, develop with staff, reads like a handbook, policy versus practice, be aspirational, set out goals, measurements, represent that our work is grounded in something. Change that, changes that are necessary with our system, include family and community and next steps, and not recreate the wheel, but use what other districts have written that and not recreate the wheel, but use what other districts have written that applies to us. Our next equity meeting will be on Monday, March 27, 21st, sorry, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. Any questions from the board? No, move on. Beth, did you have a report this month?
I just can give a brief report. Sure, it's the Long-term Planning Committee. We met on the 10th of January. We discussed ongoing process of developing a comprehensive rolling schedule of anticipated maintenance needs. Kind of past the, this referendum. So how do we keep track of what's going forward? We talked about a district-wide assessment of playgrounds. We talked about updating disclosure of the planning materials and reports on our website. We would like to bring that up to date. We talked about tracking enrollment versus projections and next steps in planning for future capacity challenges. Our next meeting is on March 10th at 4:30.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Any questions? No, okay, moving on to operations with Co-Chairs Brian McDonald and Susan Cantor.
Hi, yep, I'm taking over tonight. We met on February 2nd at 8:00 AM. We just got an update. Well, we used our new agenda format that Matt came up with and so we, we've covered a lot of topics, been a very timely matter. So thank you for that, Matt. But we discussed the ongoing open referendum projects. Matt's and the district's plan for sustainability. He's trying to come up with a plan for the next one to three years on how our sustainability projects that the district wants to undertake will be rolled out. And he informed us of the February 16th webinar, which the district held to give information to the public, which is available, I believe, on our website in case you were not able to attend on the 16th. Matt also gave us a timeline of how the administration is working toward completing their budget for this year. And so we went over that as well. And in closed session, we discussed several items that will be on our agenda tonight for approval, including our purchase of our bond rollout for this referendum and the upcoming RFPs for our roofs. Our next meeting will be on March 9th at 8:00 AM and it is open to the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Any questions? Now, moving on to personnel with Debbie Bronfeld.
Great. The Personnel Committee met on February 10th. We discussed the coverage of nurses in the district. PPS is still looking for nurses. So if you're a retired nurse looking to work, please, please contact Human Resources. We discussed several new positions and aid needed at JP and a fitness trainer needed to work in the PHS updated fitness center. And so everyone knows the fitness centers for all PHS students. You do not need to be on, on an athletic team. We discussed six period coverage for some PHS students. The next CJ Pride Fair will be held on March 23rd. Currently 50 districts are members. We discussed the current search going on for a permanent Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And our next meeting will be March 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Any questions? Okay, then moving on to Betsy Baglio, Student Achievement.
Sure, thanks. The Student Achievement Committee met at 11:30 AM on Zoom in public session on Wednesday, February 9th. We heard presentations on a number of items for the agenda, for this agenda for full board approval this evening, including new high school textbooks, environmental science and health, a new corner house partnership to provide counseling at the middle school and high school, and a new NJEA HIPP Foundation Grant for the middle school. Committee also heard a number of topics for our information only, including an update on INRS practices in our district, the timing of the ongoing DLI review and curriculum revisions, as we heard earlier this evening, to include AAPI. We really want to thank our curriculum team for taking this opportunity as well to audit our, our current curricular documents for other mandates such as the Holocaust and genocide, Amistad Commission, and LGBTQIA in order to ensure that multiple perspectives and voices are always included in our students' learning experiences. And I want to again, thank our, our parents and community members and students who spoke this evening on that topic as well. We also discussed two overnight trips on tonight's agenda for approval. Given ever changing COVID-related guidance, we've asked for the board to be updated as to any changes and look forward to continuing our discussion of the, the larger topic of these meaningful trips for our students. We then adjourned to closed session. Please note data from this fall's Start Strong Testing will be presented to the full board and the public at our board meeting on Tuesday, March 15th. And the public is invited the next day for our next Student Achievement Meeting, which is Wednesday, March 16th at 11:30 AM on Zoom. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Betsy. Any questions from the board? No, okay, so we're going to move on now to the agenda. And before we get started, I just wanted to say a few words about an employee Barbara Zostovich, who passed away earlier this month. And I asked Donna Braden if she would please just write up a little something, a little paragraph about Barbara and who she was and what she did for the district. So this is, these are Donna's words and I'm very grateful to Donna Braden for writing it. Barbara was a good heart. She has been employed with PPS since 2016 as a school bus aide. She showed love for each and every one of her students that was on her bus each year and care for them as they were her own. Barbara was a single mother of two children. Her son, who she was very proud of, was, was in the military and had passed away prior to her employment at PPS. Barbara was very active with military support and functions. Her daughter Jen also passed away a few years ago. And this had left Barbara feeling lost, but coming to PPS every day and tending to the students made her feel good and put a smile on her face. Barbara had no other family beside PPS. The whole department surrounded her with love and support and we became her family. Barbara had a kitty cat and his name was Midnight and that was her baby. Barbara was active in a fire, in a firehouse and she was part of the Women's Auxiliary. And she, she kept herself busy and working as a school aide. Besides missing Barbara's smiling face and little chit chats every day after her morning bus run, she would either go home or do errands and then come back, have her lunch and watch TV in the driver's lounge, lounge area waiting to go on her afternoon bus run. We look in that room now as we walk past and we don't see her, but the memory will always be there. And Barbara was 64. So our consul, our condolences on behalf of the board to Barbara and her friends and family. Thank you again to Donna Braden. And I'd also like to take this moment just to extend the board's condolences again to the family of Sierra Bullock on the passing of Debbie Green, who was a longtime employee of PPS. And so now we'll return back to the board business. Okay, item L1, retirements.
Jean? Yep. Hi there. I saw on the agenda two retirements that I wanted to comment on. The first was Ann Paritzman, a first grade teacher at Littlebrook, who had, has the magical quality of making every child feel loved, unique and special. And so I wanted to thank Mrs. Paritzman for her years of service and her love and kindness. The other retirement that I saw was Mrs. Joanne Parker, who is unique and spent so much time in the schools, outside of the schools, during the after school programs, making sure our children were their very best selves. And I can't thank her enough for just being there and being so caring and always being a voice of reason and calmness and understanding who our kids are and what kids need and when they need it. She will be so missed and her years of service were so tremendous. And Mrs. Parker, from the heart, we love you and will really miss you. Thanks.
Thank you, Jean. Debbie?
I also want to thank Mrs. Parker. She is everywhere, was always everywhere and just a very special person who really took care of our staff, took care of our students. And I want to thank her also for just being the, you know, one of the hearts of Princeton Public Schools. Enjoy your retirement.
Michelle?
And, and I'm going to echo the praise of the extraordinary woman, Joanne Parker. 37 years in our schools. She knows a lot of kids and, and she is loved by a lot of kids and a lot of parents because she, she cared from the heart. So I want to congratulate her on her retirement. I also want to congratulate Michelle Sherman, who took care and watched over and helped with both of my children. And I want to wish her the best in her retirement as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, item L2, resignations. Just if I don't see you, just say, hey, you. Item 3, appointments. L4, transfer reassignment. L5, leave of absence. L6, personnel.
Daphna, I need to abstain on leave of absence. And I'm sorry for the late email.
Okay, so we have to make that an action item?
Yeah, I changed that.
Should we vote on that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Although we do have another, oh, never mind. It'll be different. Okay, can I get a motion, please? Rob, second. Brian?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Talkponder?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
I'm staying.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceski?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item L6, personnel items. Item L7, athletic appointments. Item L8, substitute teachers. Item L9, six period compensation. Item 10, curriculum and instruction. Item 11, student services. Okay, we're going on to agenda, and curriculum and instruction, M1, educational consulting service, services, educational, item 2, educational consulting services, corner house. M3, grant application. M4, textbook approval. And 5, purchase of materials. And 6, purchase of materials, Bedford Freeman and Worth High School Publishers. And 7, Student Day field trips. And 8, student overnight trips. Okay, then we'll move on to N, student services. And 1, travel expense. And 2, educational placement of students. Okay. Moving on to item O, financial reports. Mr. Bolden, that is an action item?
Yes.
So if I could have a motion, please?
Can you just give me one second?
Sure, sure. Michelle, did you have your hand up for another reason? Okay.
No.
Just give me one second.
Sure, sorry.
Notes.
Also, the field trip says, the day field trip says action?
Yes, that's what I was correcting.
Okay, sorry.
Don't know. Almost there.
Take your time.
Thank you so much.
You told me I would have spoken slower.
All right.
Okay, so motion. Rob, second. Brian?
Daphne Kendall?
Staying.
Michelle Talkponder?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceski?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yeah.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Item O2, fire and evacuation drills. Item O3, emergent purchase. Item O4, acceptance of donation for Meniche. I just, on behalf of the board, like to thank for Meniche for donating vats of hand sanitizer. I believe this, this is their second or third donation to us. So thank you. We're very grateful. Third, thank you. And it's very expensive. Item O5, acceptance of donation from the Princeton High School Cross Country Track and Field Booster Club for $1,500, half the price of the hurdles. And I do have something to say really quickly. The Princeton Track and Field Club is having the 13th Princeton 5K on Saturday, March 19th. Everyone's invited to support the Princeton High School Cross Country and Track and Field Teams. It's the team's largest annual fundraiser and the money supports students in need of gear, funding for athletic equipment, not covered tents for rainy weather, and season end recognition for athletes and coaches. The in-person race starts in front of Princeton Middle School at 8:30 AM on March 19th. Runners can organize into teams. In 2022, they're adding a 300 meter, 300 meter kids dash for all children under the age of 10. This year, there's also a virtual option that runners can compete anytime between March 19th and the 26th. So please sign up, Princeton5k.com and T-shirts are guaranteed for those who register before March 1st. So I do commercials too. Let me get to the, sorry, I lost my screen.
Michelle raised her hand.
Oh, Michelle, yes.
I do. I just want to acknowledge that Kelly Curtis, who is, or was a graduate of Princeton High School, competed in the skeleton at the Winter Olympics. And she'll be back. And I'm super proud of her. She babysat my kids. So I'm, I'm over the moon. I'm proud of her for making the Olympic team and, and competing at the Olympic Games. And while I'm on sports, Princeton's just been crushing it with Ava Rose being the state champion and in wrestling, our boy swimming, our fencing team, mock trials, speech and debate. I mean, they've just been crushing it. So I think we should not let this evening go by without saying congratulations to our kids who are just going out there and doing it and representing Princeton, New Jersey in a way that is making us all very proud. So I want to make sure we didn't overlook that. And I also want to thank our, our website and our social media has just been so much, it's great. It really keeps, I think, everybody so much more informed. So thanks for that. I think it, I think we need to celebrate our kids every single chance we get.
Okay. Okay, so item O6, acceptance of donation from the PHS Volleyball Booster Club. And again, on behalf of the board, thank you for $5,000 to help improve and alter the volleyball courts. Item O7, determination of form and sale of 17.451 million of school bonds. Eight, renewal of athletic transportation. Nine, joint transportation agreement, West Windsor. 10, competitive contract awards, strategic, strategic planning consultant, Performance Fact. 11, change order authorization, PHS renovation, and 12, travel registration. Any questions or comments?
I have a question, please. I, my question, and I'm sorry if I missed it. We're bringing tents back to all the schools if they're not back yet. Mr. Bolden, I'm not sure. Did I see that? Tents?
They're, they're not back now. The ordinance in town for the larger tents couldn't be put up until at least April 1st.
Okay, but we're bringing them all back for the, till the end of the year or what's?
That was the plan that we most recently discussed.
Great, thanks.
Can I have? Okay, so now we're into our second public comment on any topic. Please just remember to be civil and keep your comments to three minutes if you can. Mr. Bolden, move. Anyone who wants to participate?
No.
No, okay. So can I get? Sorry, can I get a motion for the consent item? Betsy, second. Debbie?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Talkponder?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceski?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Consent agenda, the passes.
Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank you, Ned and Chris and, and Ying and Nancy and, and and everyone who presented. Thank you for your time. I would like to ask for a motion to go into closed session and Mr. Bolden, I believe, when do you read while we're going into closed session? Is it now? Okay. Okay.
It is resolved that the Board of Education approved the closed session resolution, whereas NJSA ten four twelve allows for a public body to go into closed session during a public meeting. And whereas the Board of Education of the Princeton Public Schools has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public and whereas the minutes of the closed session will be released when they need for confidentiality in accordance with NJSA ten four twelve no longer applies. And whereas the regular meeting of this Board of Education will be adjourned from closed session with no action taken. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Princeton Public Schools will go into closed session to do negotiations.
Motion. Beth, second. Mara?
Okay. And then would, I can do a roll call or?
We can just raise our hands.
Unanimous if anyone doesn't raise their hands. That is unanimous from my extra vision there. Quick vision, okay. All right.
All right, thank, thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is March fifteenth. Have a good night. Take care. Bye.